Call this meeting of the Coffey County Planning Commission to order on April the first, two thousand and twenty-five at four o'clock. The first thing we'll ask is for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
I second that motion.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. We are going to have public comments. So who wants to go first? Don't everybody come at once.
Yeah.
Well, we have a chance to speak after you've gone over what you're going to be voting on.
Yes, you want to do it that way? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. The first thing that we're going to do, we've got four resolutions or four items that we've We would try to make a decision as to whether we want to run those in front of the county commission individually or as one. And Mayor, I would ask you to say something to that effect. Do you have an idea or?
So everybody can hear me. Speaking with the county attorney and others, I think it might be a pretty good idea if we separated those individual items, the amendments that you guys discussed in the past in the meeting before last.
Any other comments? Rodney, Sammy? Do I have a motion that we separate those items?
I make a motion to separate them.
Randy makes a motion that we present those items separately. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Ms. Law. We're starting out the same way we did the last time.
Yeah, we did.
Any discussion about that? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
So the next time that these items get taken to the agenda, put on the agenda, I will have our attorney prepare separate resolutions.
Please do that. Okay. We're going to discuss amendments concerning major subdivisions in the A-one zone in regards to water service setbacks and road frontage. Been a big conversation about infrastructure, and that seems to be a problem, and it seems to be a problem because it seems to be lacking. Randy has done quite a bit of research on this for us. Randy, would you tell us a little bit about what Rutherford County requires in the upgrade of infrastructure?
Well, I also talked to T A U D today about this, and I know a lot of people don't like it, but developers are starting to pay for upgrades. In Rutherford County, they've been doing it for years. I've got a developer's agreement right here that Rutherford County requires. At number six, in the developer agreement specifies, "If in the determination of the district, the existing water line distribution system up to or within the above described property," which would be the subdivision, "requires expansion, upsizing, or upgrading in order to accommodate providing water service to the property, developer agrees to expand, upsize, or upgrade the existing water line system according to the district's specification and plans at the developer's expense." Now, I know a lot of people, I'm sure, do not like that, but, and I know this isn't Rutherford County, and I'm not trying to say it is, but look at Rutherford County, how it's growing. Do you know, and also I saw an article that said that the upgrade for the infrastructure ought to be put on the taxpayers and also the ratepayers. Well, utilities do not get tax money. Okay? They don't get any tax money. Now, they might get a grant occasionally from the USDA. That's to expand water to customers that need water, safe water. Okay? Now, also, I'm trying to think of something else I was going to say, but like I say, I mean, it's, you know, they don't, also, Rutherford County has not, you seen the way they're growing? Rutherford County has not had a rate increase on water in ten years. Who's paying for all the infrastructure? The developers. They're doing the roads. I can take you out there and show you job after job that developers are paying. Now, the thing is, developers are paying this infrastructure, upgrading it, because it opens up more territory. Okay? I mean, you think about it. You go out, yes, okay, I want to put in a subdivision down the road here. I've got to put in, one prime example, and I know he has seen it, off Kingwood Lane, Kingwood Road in Murfreesboro, a developer put in three miles of sixteen-inch ductile. We're talking millions, couple millions, sixteen-inch ductile. Now, Coffey County don't need no sixteen-inch ductile, no. But he put it in, in his expense, because he's doing a development of about four hundred houses at the end of that line. He had to get the water there. Did the utility pay for it? No. If you want the water, we've got the water. If you want it, you're going to pay to get it there. And also, another thing you need to think about, we keep adding on to these small utilities that's here in Coffey County. A utility has a maximum amount that they can make a day, set by TDEC. That is state regulations. Okay? If they meet that maximum amount, and you don't have no upgrades, what's going to happen? You're going to see Coffey County's growth stop, because you're not going to be able to do any more subdivisions. Because once they meet that amount, they can't do anymore. So that's another thing you need to think about. The upgrades, yes, it benefits the residents, but it also benefits the developers. I've seen case after case of that. I've seen, I can show you down on Rocky Fort Road, two developers went in together, ran a line, a twelve-inch line down Rocky Fort Road. Right now, there's five to six subdivisions off of that one road. Ten years ago, there was nothing. So Coffey County needs to get up to date. Developers need to pitch in and help upgrade the infrastructure. Like I said, I mean, you're the ones, you're the ones wanting to put subdivision there. The ratepayers aren't. The taxpayers aren't. You are.
Thanks, Randy. Appreciate that.
So, and also, right here's another prime example, real quick. Burgess, down in Murfreesboro, he's building a subdivision in six hundred and six homes. He's putting in water lines, getting to it. He's also doing road construction, and you can read this, it's in the newspaper down in Murfreesboro, he's doing road construction at intersections that are not even joining the property to help the county and stuff. And there is several articles like that around Murfreesboro, and the planning commission, thanks, I was just looking real quick here, but like I said, I mean, you're welcome to look at this, because I mean, like I say, he's doing three intersections. Road found in plans, that's the developer. So like I said, we're not trying to stop the growth. This community is not trying to stop the growth in Coffey County. We're trying to look out for the infrastructure and the county itself, because eventually, them infrastructures are going to be maxed out. And like I said, when it does, then your growth is going to stop, and I've seen it happen. I've been in the utility for thirty-seven years, and I've seen it happen. When a water utility cannot pump no more, that's it.
Thanks, Randy.
So, thank you.
When's the last time, Sam, when's the last time that you can remember that Hillsville had a rate increase on water? Can you remember one?
Yeah, we've had one recently, but it was because the water we buy went up, so we had to pass it along.
And what do you, do you have any idea where you are as far as what your capacity could be?
No, I do not.
Okay, okay, just asking a question. Does anybody want to reply to what Randy had to say? Mayor?
Is it not true that the developers that put in the lines recover the cost of that when somebody else taps on their line?
No. When a developer puts in a line, that line is tested, disinfected, it is tested, sampled, and then once it's put in service, it becomes the utility's responsibility after a year warranty by the developer.
Question, sir, is if I put a line in two miles, and if somebody else that puts another subdivision in on that line, do they not have to pay the fee to develop to tap that line?
That could be an agreement between you and that utility, if you wanted to. Ours, no.
I mean, there is though.
You can, yeah. I mean, that's between you and the utility. In Rutherford County, no. If you put in two mi, if that guy put in at three miles a sixteen-inch ductile, and I go out there and build a subdivision a mile down it and tap that line, that line's not his no more. That line's the utility's. So they pay the utility to tap that line, for tapping that line, not the contractor that put it in. But like I said, I have heard cases in the past at other utilities where the developer did hold a margin of ownership on that line.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just, I'm speaking from my experience. Okay? But like I say, no, after that year warranty, soon as that line is tested and approved by samples, distribution samples on it, that line becomes, and it's turned on, that line becomes consolidated. But the warranty is a year.
In thinking about that, you know, if I spent money, like you said, three million dollars to go down there.
Mm-hmm.
Don't you think it would be fair if somebody jumps in between me and there to develop another development, that they should have to bear a portion of that cost?
Like I said, that's between you and the utility. All I can do is speak from my, that I know, okay? But the thing is, I mean, that's just like, I mean, like I say, he spent, I don't know how much money on that sixteen-inch and everything, but before he did that, he asked about a subdivision, his subdivision was going to be about a hundred houses, was all he was going to be able to have. Now it's close to four hundred. So, yes, he might have to pay some upfront, but he's coming out ahead in the long run, because he's also, now, he can go back a mile down the road and tap that line, or we'll tap it for him, and he can take off from there, and that opens up all that three miles of expansion through there. And you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Well, has it, you know, he is enabling somebody along that owns property to develop theirs without the expense of the line, and you know, it would seem that that would be, and I, is Hillsville, is that representative of Hillsville right here?
No.
I'm sorry, I may not know.
Yes, sir, my name's Sammy Anderson.
Okay, I'm Charles Miller, and I just, do you do that now?
Hillsville has policy. I'm not sure exactly what it is on rural development, but they do have policy that they will follow.
Let's move on, okay?
For the benefit of our viewing audience, Charles Miller asked a question, if as a developer, if he put in three miles of water line and somebody tapped in at the one-and-a-half-mile mark for another development, shouldn't he be reimbursed for some of his costs to put that line in? And I think the answer was, it's between him and the utility.
Him and the utility.
I'd like to say something, should I come up or just?
Yes, of course.
We're streaming these meetings, so if you're not on camera and you're not in a microphone, it does the public no good. So, yes, sir, thanks for coming up.
I'm used to being the target here, so it's all good. Nicholas Northcutt, Northcutt surveying, I just wanted to throw out a couple of alternatives to this idea, and I just wanted to ask, you know, like, these examples that have been thrown out are for huge developments, you know, six hundred houses and four hundred houses is what you just said.
Yeah.
But a major division in Coffey County is five or more lots. So what y'all are talking about would apply to somebody just trying to do...
We're getting to that. We're fixing to get to that.
Okay.
But go ahead, go ahead.
But no, there's subdivisions in Rutherford County that's like fifty lots, like out there off of Airport Road, that the developer had to run an eight-inch line to supply that subdivision and also to supply the fire protection for that subdivision. I can show you one right here, Stag Horn, Stag Horn, out there at Fostable. They had to run an eight-inch line down there to it and up into, and actually around a twelve-inch up into subdivision, just to build these houses. And there's approximately, the first phase was approximately this much, and then the second phase is this much, but altogether, you're looking at maybe sixty houses?
Go ahead, Nick, I'm sorry, interrupt you.
Well, but I'm wondering why the county is making these requirements that are so much more strict than the state requirement? Because a developer can't install and approve a water line, the utility company can't install a water line and approve it, it's only the state that can do it. And the state has no requirements for fire protection.
Yes, they do.
They have a requirement that if you're like, if you're going to put a hydrant, it's got to go on a six-inch line.
Yes, it's got to go on a six-inch line.
Well, then why is Hillsville and Wes Warren able to run a two-inch line down a county road to serve people?
Because that does not have fire protection.
Exactly.
And they don't have fire protection, Nick, that's what we're getting at.
Here's your email. Here's an email strictly from TDEC's field office in Nashville. Their head field office says it's a minimum six-inch, five hundred gallons.
For fire protection.
For fire protection.
But the utility companies aren't providing fire protection. They're not, they don't have to, it's not a state requirement.
Nick, you're repeating your own purpose. Keep talking, please.
So I had to sit in a meeting with Wes Warren, and the lady, who was the manager there, her name is Kelly Cantrell, she said, or what she was kind of doing was she was kind of complaining that they're having to maintain hydrants that the county requires to put in. And she said, "We are not in the business of providing fire protection." So if the state has no requirement to put in a water line and provide fire protection, then why would the county be stepping in?
The state requires you to put in six, the state requires you to put in six-inch lines with fire hydrants every so often.
To meet fire protection codes, not to serve people with water.
There used to be a program, and I don't know, Mayor, if it's still a program here, where the water utility, the state or the county would buy the pipe, and the water utility would lay the pipe.
That was a USDA grant.
And that was the program here.
Yes.
You had to lay six-inch line, and you had to put fire hydrants on that six-inch line. Didn't say anything about minimum fire flow. What we're talking about is there minimum fire flow or is there not minimum fire flow? Okay?
What Nick's saying is you don't have to have fire protection to build a house according to the state. What y'all want to do is pass that you can't build a house here if it doesn't have fire protection, that's fine, but let's get it right. He's right. You can build a house without fire protection.
That's not what we're trying to do, Rodney.
You can build a house without fire protection.
Yes, you can.
But y'all are arguing fire protection, that's not what he's arguing. He's saying you don't have to have fire protection to build a house. If we want to pass, you have to have fire protection, that's fine, but you can't require fire protection without passing that first.
We are trying to add some protection and some safety to building in the county.
I get what you're saying. I said, pass it that you have to have fire protection, but that's not what he's arguing. You're sitting there saying he's wrong, and he's not.
Well, so I do know of an instance, there was a gentleman that I was working for who was trying to do, I think it was like a twenty-five lot division on Gosburg Road in Beach Grove.
Mm-hmm.
It was on the, it was, it was past Possum Paw.
Upper on the left.
Yep, and so Wes Warren had the pressure. They've got a fire, they've got a fire tower, excuse me, a water tower, and they had the ability to provide him fire flow, and they wouldn't, because they don't have to, because it's not a state requirement, and that's not stuff that they want to put in.
They also, well...
And he offered to pay to run it back to the source, and they would not do it. So if you've got a utility company that's not required to do it, and the state requirement is not that you have to do it, then, you know, what y'all are asking is beyond what the utility companies are willing to provide.
I'm not asking for a utility to run a six or eight-inch for fire protection. I'm asking the developer to upgrade it to a water supply for that subdivision. If it can, six-inch, fine, that's good fire flow, if you've got it. Don't mean you have to, you don't have to necessarily have it, but you've got to upgrade these lines. They're putting subdivisions on four-inch lines. Do you know how much water's in a four-inch line or one foot four-inch line?
No, I'm not a water guy.
Point six-five gallons.
Okay.
A half a gallon per foot and two inches, four inches. So that's what I'm saying. The problem is, you've got these utilities, just like Hillsborough is, they're building these on four-inch lines, and you've got thirty, forty houses on that four-inch line. Eventually, you're going to reach your max on that line. When you do, you're going to have people with no water.
Is that not up for the utility company to decide, though?
No. Well, the utility company decides.
I mean, they know, don't they? Like, we sitting around this table, we don't know what their capacity is. They do, and the state does. But why are we making rules when we're not the water professionals?
I'm not trying to make the rule. I'm trying to get the developers to put in on the jobs.
Let's, let's, let's hold up just a minute. Rodney, we're not saying that you need to have fire protection to build a home. I don't, I didn't hear that come from anybody. What I did hear was, and what we're talking about is lot sizes, and if you want to go down to a smaller lot size, you're going to have to have fire protection water. That's just, that's just all there is to it. I think in our, it's already in our book.
He's saying the state doesn't require that. The state already has a lot size without fire protection. The state already has a mandate for that.
It works now. The last major subdivision was in 'oh seven. Like, it's, it's, it's working, the existing...
Whoa, 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 I'm tired of hearing that. Did you just say the last major subdivision was in 'oh seven?
On Palm Rory Road? Yes, sir. Or the last major one with road and infrastructure improvement?
Okay, thank you. You finally cleared it up.
Major division with roads and infrastructure.
You actually have said and written that our last major subdivision, it was in a letter to the Tennessean, was nine years ago. We've had lots of major subdivisions without roads in the last nine years.
So how is that more beneficial when you've got a developer that wants to do it right? Build roads and build new infrastructure rather than piggybacking off of existing roads and...
Nobody said it was more beneficial, but you made it out to believe that we've not had any major subdivisions.
That's what the codes guy told me, that major subdivisions with roads...
No, no. We're not down, but this road is a history story, straight.
I said that, where these major developments that they're talking about with infrastructure is what I was referring to.
He said that, he told you with roads. So please try to be more accurate if you can, okay?
If we want to make an amendment...
I appreciate what y'all do, by the way.
That you can't build a major subdivision that doesn't have fire flow? We need to do that. But he's saying the state doesn't require it.
And I appreciate what you do, but I represent, don't take this as my personal...
That's my point.
I represent probably thousands of people that I have worked for over the years that this is going to impact.
Okay.
The average Joe, that's who this is going to impact.
Okay.
How's it, how's it going to impact them if the developer pays for the upgrade?
Because it goes into the house he sells. He ain't losing money.
Exactly.
It all goes into the house he sells, yeah. Like I said, he's not going to lose money, but...
So that three miles went into every house he built at the end of that line.
Yeah, but those other people down there are, the people along that line is guaranteed water. If you take a four-inch line and you run it down there and run it into a subdivision that's got fifty houses, eventually that four-inch is going to reach its maximum. And when it does, what happens? No water, no pressure.
Well, the utility company will tell you that, not us.
Well, I'm not trying to say, I'm just saying the developer needs to help.
Is there water language in our zoning resolution? Is our, do we have water language in our zoning resolution?
In the subregs, there's a language about...
There's all through our zoning resolution, there's water language, okay? If you haven't read it, I'd suggest you go back and read it, okay? And you're done.
Oh, all right, well, hey, appreciate your time. I'll be back up on the next offer.
That'll be good. Anybody, everybody enjoy that. Anybody else have anything to say about water? Yes?
Mike Bryan, I'm a farmer out in Hasbury. I've been coming to these since the old Airport Road subdivision's come up, and the very first meeting was in the big room. And the planning committee made a statement that they were worried about litigation from the county concerning all this. Water flow, fire protection, I believe it's Lincoln County just had an issue where they approved something with fire protection that didn't have adequate fire protection, now the county's getting sued.
The utility?
The utility's getting sued. I believe that TDEC does have some requirements concerning fire flow, Quinn, am I correct in right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so if this, there's a lot of confusion about these zoning amendments, that there's a minimum of five acres. That is without coming in full, in front of the full commissioners. I would encourage everybody to go back and read these amendments carefully as to what they are and what they truly mean. You can still build houses in the rural A-one areas under less than five acres, it just has to go through the full county commission approval. We all could take a deep breath and figure out how to get through this to where it benefits. The infrastructure is adequate and safe. If the planning committee is, and the county commissioners are concerned with litigation, safety should be priority number one. Road widths, adequate traffic, adequate water flow, adequate fire flow. This should be a no-brainer to me, and who, and as a taxpayer, land taxpayer, and a fairly large one, I don't want it going towards infrastructure to put developers, I don't have anything against the developers, but I don't want to pay for it, and I don't think the majority of the taxpayers in this county want to pay for it. So it's a fair request to push the burden back to the developers to get the infrastructure required for public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
May I clear up one thing?
Yes.
There's been a lot of confusion regarding water. The zoning resolution revised in two thousand and six, that's nineteen years ago, has always had fire flow language in it, and it is, I'm going to read it, this is the language in our zoning resolution, for purposes of this resolution... For purposes of this resolution, the term minimum fire flow shall mean a five hundred gallon per minute water flow calculated at twenty pounds per square inch residual pressure delivered from a water line that is six inches or greater in diameter. The only thing we've changed is added the words continuous to the point of origin. Just so that there's not a six inch line laying out here, but it's actually connected to a four inch line or something. It's just, it just clears it up, makes it, uh, that's the only change we've made to our water language for those that thinks this is something we just pulled out of our hat.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go on to, uh, the set, let's go on to setbacks. Originally, in our zoning resolution, the front, side, and rear setbacks, the front is fifty in all areas, in all lot sizes. The rear was fifty, 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 or fifty feet in all zones. And that's side and rear. Now, a year and a half or two ago, that was changed to twenty-five, twenty-five. That was a meeting that I was not, I miss one meeting a year maybe, and I missed that one, okay?
I'm pretty sure you were at that meeting. It wasn't a year ago.
No, I was not. No, I was not. I promise you I was not, or I would've fought that thing tooth and nail. We tried to pass that before in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, and our volunteer fire departments came unglued.
I think you just had the most educated fireman in here tell you it ain't necessary.
Who's the most educated fireman?
Yeah, Phil Duncan, the one that's taught every one of your volunteers here. The man that spent forty-five years on the fire department and thirty-five years teaching at the state fire school. I don't wanna hear what a volunteer fireman said. I want the man that gets paid to train them.
Well...
And that man told you in the last meeting, and I'm about tired of this coming up three or four times, that that doesn't need to be done. He fought fire here for forty-five years.
Out of order, Rodney, okay? I, that, I, I'm worried about Summitville, Hillsborough.
We fought with them too.
Union, union, how many fires have you fought?
I fought a ton with Hickerson Station.
How, how about between, hey, that's, that's over there by Telehoma. How about between ninth model and Viola?
What's that?
How many, how many fires have you fought specifically in the Hillborough district?
I haven't fought any in the Hillborough district, but he probably has.
How about in Beach Grove? How about in Beach Grove? How many have you fought in Beach Grove?
Probably none in Beach Grove.
How about...
But that has nothing to do, it's the same dis- it's the same thing, whether it's Hickerson Station, Beach Grove, Hillsborough, it's all the same firefighting.
It's, it may be the same firefighting, but it's not the same guys doing it, okay?
No, we didn't. He taught for the state. He taught all the volunteers.
Hold on, we're not gonna go down that road, okay? We're not gonna go down that road. We're talking about the setbacks. I don't, I, I was not at that meeting. I can promise you that I was not at that meeting. I would've fought it tooth and nail.
You don't need a hundred feet between houses.
Uh, I, now I'm bringing it back up again. And I do not think that in these rural areas, in the A1 areas, that we need to have... I don't know how many of you have ever, have ever set a brush, a brush pile on fire, which doesn't burn usually as hot as a house. But Sammy, if you stand fifty feet from a brush fire, don't you send your eyebrows off?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, that, that's the question I wanted to ask. I would like to discuss changing, and we've heard Rodney's point of view, but I would like to see us go back to the fifty, fifty, uh, fifty front, fifty sides and rear. Anybody in the audience wanna discuss that?
This would be in the absence of fire flow protection.
That's right. This would be in the absence of fire flow.
I just had to stand up, sir.
Oh, I thought you...
I was waiting very patiently.
Anybody, any, any thoughts on any of this?
The one thing I did know, and I meant to bring it with me, apparently that's the one thing I forgot. I did look up the ISO for several of the fire departments around here, the volunteer ones especially. A ISO rating is a rating that the insurance companies give the fire departments on fire flow, fire protection, the equipment they've got, and, you know, their men and everything, it's a rating they get, okay? The ISO in several of the ramp, places around here are five to six, not if I'm one seven, okay? The ISO ranges from one to ten, one being the best. So that tells you, you know, our volunteer firefighters, God bless them, um, my hats off to them. They do all they can, and I know there's a lot of territory, but it is a lot of territory out there. And, you know, how long, I've seen fires myself, and I've seen by the time the volunteer fire departments got there, a house burning just right up the road from me. Thank God there wasn't nobody in it. But the time the fire department got there, that house was gone. It was basically foundation left, okay? Because it was in the middle of the night, all right? I know they're volunteers, like I said, my hats off to them and everything. But another thing too, I mean, Tennessee is ranked fifth worst in the nation for fire fatalities. Now, you know, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I think we need to do everything we can to help prevent, you know, especially in rural areas and stuff, so that's all I gotta say.
And, and like I said, from the time this took effect in two thousand and one to two thousand twenty-two or three, the setbacks were what I'm trying to go back to, so...
Do y'all know how many houses have burned from their neighbors' houses?
I don't have a, I don't have a number on that, but I know there've been some.
Name one, Aaron. I don't know a single one. Did twenty-four years.
Like I said, I mean, you fought over in my part of the world.
I did fight in your part of the world. I fought with Hickerson Station. It's no different. Same part of the world. It's the same part of the world. It's all Coffee County. It's all rural.
All right, guys, I'd like to add, this fire flow, water, all that, you don't have to look back too far in newscast of the fires in Hawaii, the fires in California where they have straight line winds. And this is, I think that's the reason that we had the fire flow language put in here to begin with, to separate the houses, uh, to where they would not. I advocated for taking those restrictions out. But the fire, the, the day we, uh, voted on this the first time in the full legislative body, the fire chief of Manchester, all fire chiefs of our volunteer fire departments came and begged us not to change it. They, nobody, nobody is trying to say that in the rural areas, they hook a hose onto a fire hydrant and fight the fire with it. They have nurse tanks. They need to be able to get to a fire flow hydrant, fill those nurse tanks up to get those, uh, engines back full of water where they can. Uh, and that is the logic and the reason behind the major setbacks in the fire flow language.
I've fought off nurse tank before, thank you. But as for Hawaii, I just left a month before that fire. Their houses roofs hang over each other. That's totally different than fifty feet to a hundred feet. Not even a comparable incident.
Twenty-five and twenty-five is fifty feet.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, it's fifty feet between houses. That's plenty. You don't need a hundred.
I know Mr. Seagro's, uh, heart of your resolution dealt with this.
It was pretty short.
Do I?
It was pretty short.
I don't have it. All I have is on my phone. Do you have a copy?
I got a copy. Well, you're right here.
Oh, okay. Would you like to speak to that, or?
Well, the setbacks, essentially, I stated, leave it as, let me get up here. Leave it as is because the planning committee recently voted on this. We were, we're fine with leaving it as it was. Yes.
That's not in there. Anybody wanna see it?
Anybody else wanna speak to, speak to this?
Whether it's putting in the water lines or setbacks.
Step up the microphone, Sarah.
Um, your name is? Sorry, Sarah Bradley. And, uh, I've really been trying to see this from both sides, and what I'm frustrated with, it happens all the time, but we seem to be looking at this as a black and white. They either pay for the infrastructure all the way to the origin, or they pay for nothing, upgrade nothing. We either double the setbacks or we leave them the same. I'm just, I'm a middle ground person, and I'm wondering what compromise we could come up with. And I wonder, of course, it'd be a little more complicated, but what's occurring to me in real time as y'all are talking is, um, I'm wondering if it'd be appropriate to base setbacks on the nearest hydrant that meets fire flow. Like, if there's one right down the road, then maybe the setbacks aren't as big. If it's two miles away, I, I can't speak to that. We'd need to talk to firefighters and the utilities, um. And, uh, since I'm up here, the, I'm glad you brought up the share, cost sharing. There's something in Manchester's code about that. If someone runs a water line and someone else taps in, they get paid back a little bit. That's fair. But I know that's beyond y'all's scope. That's the, the utilities. But, uh, I just hope, I know there's, there's a lot of emotion behind this. I've felt it too and, uh, had good moments and not so good moments. But I just, let's figure out, let's find some middle ground. I think it's there. Um, and I just, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Let's go back to the table here.
Can I say one? You care, Bob? I know you care. Nicholas Northcutt again. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate, yeah, that it was just a year that we were having this argument. It was Mayor Hunt who...
No, it was Commissioner Hunt.
That's right.
Commissioner Hunt, excuse me. Yes, sir.
Mayor Hunt don't vote on anything, okay?
Yes, sir, excuse me. Uh, who was, you know, instrumental in helping us get that passed, but just as a surveyor...
You brought that before the planning commission yourself, right?
Uh, no, I think that was the easement thing that Tim Brown brought up and asked me to speak on that night. But no, I hadn't brought anything up.
Okay, you didn't bring up changing the setbacks?
No, I'd love to, but, uh, no, uh, I've been, uh, I mean, since, um, two thousand and fourteen, I've been doing this, and I average about four hundred jobs a year. So I've done a lot of jobs, and what I can say with the set, and just in regards to the setback thing, that was a major, um, encumbrance on people, and I'm not talking about developers trying to do subdivisions, but people just trying to carve off a lot for junior on their land. Like, you would not believe how hard this was on people. So I was relieved when it was twenty-five foot across the board, and I wanna remind everybody that twenty-five foot is more than any other county around us. And I don't think they want their people to burn any more or less than we want ours to burn, but like, the, like, we have already with twenty-five feet, the most restrictive side setbacks, side and rear setbacks than any other county. And all I would ask is that if there's gonna be change made on the setbacks, let's make it based on data from Coffee County. And let's see how many houses that were fifty feet apart have burned their neighbor's house. Let's see how many of those there actually have been before we make a change that will be, what I can tell you from my personal work would be very burdensome on the people. And trust me, like, most people, they don't want to have the minimum between their neighbors. They wanna have as much space. That's why they move out to the county. They wanna have as much space as they can. And I get that, cause I live out in the county and I want nothing but trees and fields around me too. But like, we see so many times in just minor divisions where having to have a hundred feet in between two houses just made it impossible to do stuff with their land. I mean, they might have five acres. And if their house, you know, if it's only a hundred and fifty foot wide and their house is in the middle of it or something like, I mean, you automatically just can't divide it, even if you've got plenty of land back behind it for junior to build on. I'm, I'm just saying, like, that's a very, um, that's a very far-reaching, um, requirement. And even if y'all did decide to change it based on data, I would consider something other than fifty feet, like anything other than fifty, because that is, I mean, look at your own bulk restrictions as it is now. If you do a one acre lot in the county, the minimum width on that is a hundred and twenty-five feet. Well, you know, you have to go to an acre if you don't have fire flow. So if you've got fifty foot side setbacks on the minimum required lot, then that leaves you with a twenty-five foot wide building envelope, which is not, I mean, you can't build a house on that. You're gonna build a shotgun house on a hundred and twenty-five foot wide lot, like it, it doesn't make sense, but, um... Well, I mean, it already is that way. When you're eight tenths of an acre, it's a hundred feet in width. But if you're not meeting the fire flow, this is what a lot of people, I don't think, understand. Like, you can get down to eight tenths of an acre only if you hit the jackpot and you've got your fire protection and you've got all the requirements in place, then you get to do eight tenths of an acre. But if you don't have that fire protection, they do make you have bigger lots. It does get bumped up to an acre. Your lot has to be wider. It's gotta be twenty-five foot wider. And then if you don't have water at all, then it gets a two acre minimum at a hundred and fifty feet of width. So we've already got, we've already got more strict lot sizes and setbacks than any other county that surrounds us, except for more now with, you know, the five acre thing.
There you go.
Uh, yeah, but they're half the size of us, and they're trying to kill commercial and residential development. So if, if you're trying to kill it, these are good things to vote through. But if we're trying to kill growth, and this is not just growth, this is not for people from California coming in. This is for people in Coffee County that can't find housing right now and that, you know, I mean, that, those are the people that are gonna be affected much more than the developers. Cause like you said, Mr. Harold, like, if they're gonna build four hundred lot division, it's gonna be worth it to them to run a mile of six inch water line. They can do it. But the guy trying to carve a lot off for his son or his daughter, those are the people that are gonna, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna eat this more than any developer will.
How, how are they gonna, if you're trying to buy a lot off for your son or relative, how does that got to do with the development of a subdivision?
I'm just saying, the requirements that y'all are putting in general are very burdensome, not just to a developer. I mean, my point is, it's not just to the developer, but it's to the average person trying to do a very small division of property, like a one lot division.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I want a clarification. If, if we're discussing subdivision requirements in the A1 rural areas, major subdivision requirements, and these setbacks are pertaining only to major subdivision requirements.
Thank you.
Does his point, you, is it not, it wouldn't, it would not fall under?
Fifty foot on major developments?
If I only cut the lot off for my son, it wouldn't fall under the major subdivision, would it, Doc?
It just, it'd fall under the subdivision, not a major, no.
So it would not be necessarily restricted to this setback?
Mayor.
As I understand it, our bulk requirements of setbacks would apply to all lots. Minor, major, uh, but in rebuttal to your comments, I sat on the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, until I became mayor. No one ever came before the Board of Zoning Appeals needing to reduce that fifty foot side yard setback and were refused. No one. We always approved a smaller setback. And what it did do though, is all the individuals that had the property, we actually did them a favor scooting their house over a little bit. Cause then they got room for outbuildings and all of that. But the people that needed it closer are closer. They never got refused.
Well, that's because they never made it that far, because we have been told, you know, that you cannot ask or apply for a variance for a new division. You can only apply for a variance in a pre-existing condition. So there again, if you've got your five acre tracks and your lot's right in the middle, you can't go and apply for a variance to get an easement or, or, or to get a flag stem to the back, because you're creating an, an, an non-compliance situation. It would only apply to an existing situation. So, that's why you didn't hear about them, because they never bothered to pay the fee to go ask for a variance that they weren't gonna get. Because you're not allowed to give it, as I understand, for, for a new situation. I mean, now, if that's something that is on the table, then it would certainly be something that I would want to advise my clients on.
I would think that a conceptual minor subdivision that was brought to the attention of our codes enforcement office, that looked as though fifty-foot side yard would not work, that they would be instructing them to ask for the variance, along with the approval for the minor subdivision.
That's just not-
I can't think of an example where somebody did not get to do what they wanted to do regarding the side setback.
I mean, I can think of fifty of them, but, but there again-
Do you have to go forward? Are you just thinking, you're just thinking fifty hypotheticals or?
No, I'm talking about instances where I had to turn people down because they didn't have enough room in between an existing house and either another existing house or a property line. Guys, there's, they've got five-foot side setbacks in Cannon County, you know?
One, one thing I've asked you not to do, you keep talking about this county and that county.
You brought up Rutherford County. It's fair game.
It's coffee county.
That's what I want. I just want data from Coffee County before we start changing the setbacks to something that, that I deal with on a daily basis, guys. I deal with it every day and I see how it affects. It's not the developers that this affects, it affects the small guy. I just wanted to, to say that.
You were, you were talking about them not being able to do what they wanted on the, because of their setbacks just now. That you had, picked you something that was refused.
Yes, sir.
Did those fifty ever go to the county?
They didn't get that far.
We've been instructed to not advise them to go to the county because you can't apply for a variance.
Who instructed you to do that?
The code enforcer.
Variants is for lots of record, existing lots. If you're creating lots after the zoning law was approved, then you have to, to develop your subdivision by our zoning laws where you don't ask for variances.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure, I didn't know. Okay.
Thank y'all.
Okay. I just asked you to clear it up.
I make a motion, we push this until somebody can do a study on how many houses caught the house next to them on fire with fifty feet apart.
Just a second. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Forgive me, as we talk about other counties in comparison to these setbacks, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have the education on this. Would that not take, or would, would it not have to be drawn into the equation what the county budget is for our firefighters to support them in their job? Should these?
We, we don't, we do not have a county-wide fire department.
That's what I thought, that's my point.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm the exact example that Mr. Northcutt brought up. I have the exact situation. My, I want to carve out that one to one and a half acre piece of property and my son was going to have to try to find a shotgun house to put on it, because we have a hundred and fifty feet, take fifty, that gives you fifty foot, which really realistically is probably less. But then you get into the point where they want to start turning their house, these double wides or modular homes sideways, and they don't look right on the property. And I am here for the, this reason to learn this today, because we're in the middle of working on it right now. And it makes a big difference as to-
How big's your lot, ma'am?
It's about a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty foot, the area that we want to give them.
But how big's your whole lot?
Oh, nine acres.
That's what, because, yes. Nine acres and fighting with it because of the setbacks and things.
Right.
I don't understand that.
So, two years ago, we were this way.
It's thin. You see, that's the thing, when you go by acres, you don't know if it's a hun, two-hundred foot wide and ten-thousand foot long, or if it's five-thousand feet wide and two-hundred feet deep.
You've got, how many acres did you say?
We have nine acres. Um, I believe we're four hundred, I'm sorry, nine hundred by, I don't know, four hundred and fifty by nine hundred. I can't remember the numbers. But whatever we are, we, we have, I think we're nine hundred, whatever makes nine acres, we're pretty much a rectangle. But we're the exact situation.
Have you looked at that, Kurt? Have you looked at her lot?
I, I called yesterday and that's how I knew this meeting was today. I don't know who I spoke with, um, but it, I'm the exact situation. So, I'm with this person here. If you have, if you're gonna change it to fifty from twenty-five, could you find a middle ground? You know, does it have to go from twenty-five to fifty? Could it be thirty-five? Could it be anything less than fifty?
Thank you for your input. We appreciate that.
She's got something to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, your, so your suggestion to review and study to determine how many houses caught on fire due to a neighboring structure fire, um, you really only have like, maybe a year's worth of data that would be even reliable and comparable to what you're trying to do if the setbacks were changed a year ago. So, any data taken prior to the change of the setbacks wouldn't even really be relevant.
They were closer to that before the fifty-foot setbacks were done. There's plenty of houses that are less than fifty foot apart. I'm just asking them to find houses in the county that call each other closer. You can go to the city where they're even closer than that and say, I'm just asking them to, let's do data on how many houses caught the house next to them on fire.
I mean, all-
At the fifty-foot mark caught the house next to them on fire.
I think the question that, you know, your, is it your father, Trill Duncan?
Mm-hmm.
Is the resounding expert in anything fire-related, while I am aware that he is an instructor and he is well-regarded in the firefighting profession. Um, here locally, he doesn't know where-
Statewide.
Okay, statewide, I'm sorry, statewide.
He teaches for the state. He teaches all live burns for the state, all types.
Thank you. So, while I am aware of that, your suggestion that he is the only expert that should be-
I didn't say he was the only expert.
And also, you're telling this missile of volunteer firefighters that donate their time and they're-
I'm not dismissing them.
Yes, you are. To protect this county.
I don't, ma'am, I don't think he was dis-
I'd love firefighters more than anybody. I'm a firefighter, my daddy's a firefighter, my brother's a firefighter. I'm talking, I don't know what to tell you, I'm not dismissing them. My brother's a volunteer fireman, I've been one.
I want to hear from the volunteer firemen, I want to hear from a patient.
I don't want to, I said, I don't think they know more than my father.
Let's get it back to the table here.
Who trained them.
Let's, let's get it back to the table here. Uh, is there any more discussion on this from the table? Okay, now we, you know, we're going to have another meeting at the end of the month. Do you want to think about these situations and wait until then to vote? Or I'll take a motion that we vote on this now, yea or nay?
Which one we vote on?
We're voting on the setbacks. Do I have a motion that we put it off until our next meeting?
I'll make a motion to put it off until we can see what kind of, uh, houses that are fifty foot apart have caught each other on fire.
I've got a motion from Rodney that I'm not gonna say that how many have caught on fire from fifty foot apart, but we will put it off. So I've got a motion that we put it off till our next meeting.
Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone, excuse me, Mayor. I'm not as adept at this as you are. Uh, do I have a motion to postpone? Well, we either got a vote or we gotta postpone.
Any more motions?
Oh, oh, second, second.
I'll, I'll second. I'll second.
I have a second from Randy Harrell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So who's responsible for providing that data?
Whoever wants the setbacks changed.
It may, uh, it may be my buddy Randy here, he's really good at that. Lost my place. Okay. Uh, Mr. Seagroves.
It's this way.
Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about your resolution?
Sure.
See, there you are, right there.
So this is nothing official, this is just something-
We didn't put your name, but we didn't know what, you know, what your name did.
I don't mind, I've been attached to a lot worse. My name's Garth Seagroves, living in Telahoma, two nineteen South College Streets. My residence and offices is at one thirteen West Moore Street. Um, lifelong residence of this area, mainly Telahoma, but spend a lot of my time in Manchester and have it since two thousand and nine, since I'm on shingle. And so I'm over here pretty much five days a week, um, in court.
Interrupt you just one second. We will not, this just came to us yesterday. I've decided to let, uh, Mr. Seagroves present it, but we will not be voting on it today. Okay, just for everybody, just for everybody's information.
Um, in regards to the resolution, and we became aware that we could do this, I believe, last meeting and it took a while to get our backs and figures together. Um, and I believe hearing this earlier in the meeting will probably change this to where it's all individual as opposed to one, one group. Uh, this is essentially three items that we have put down. And I believe what everyone has agreed here today, before you go forward with it, you'll do your resolutions individually. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor, Chairman?
Yeah.
I believe that's what's gonna happen.
Would we be allowed to do that for the next meeting? Would we be allowed to, to break this up into three separate resolutions for the next meeting as well?
If that's what, if that's the way you want to present it, I would say, yeah.
At this, at this meeting, planning.
Yes, plan, correct. So, the first, we, we had three, mainly really two, um, issues that we wanted to present to this, um, planning commission so we could get a proper vote on it, up or down, and take it to the full county commission. Um, the first is regarding, um, water fire protection requirements. Um, Nicholas Northcutt has gone over this and I kind of have put this on the resolution in very simple, black and white requirements. Um, essentially, it has three avenues. If county requirements are met, meaning one has water service, when I say water service, I'm talking about public water, and one ha, is a mile from a functioning hydrant, a major subdivision may have lot sizes of point eight acres with one hundred lot width. If not that, if you have water service and do not have a hydrant within a mile, then you can have an acre lot with a hundred and twenty-foot width. And if not that, if you have no public water and you have no, um, fire flow, then it's a two-acre minimum requirement with a hundred and fifty-foot lot width. That's what we're proposing on that. Short, sweet, step one, step two, step three. The next is roads. This is a little bit different and it hasn't been discussed. Um, if you're fronting on a road that does not have a fifty-foot right-of-way, then the developer can be asked to dedicate, or a public use easement can be put in place to ensure that the county has a twenty-five foot from the center of roadway. Also, we're stating that to ensure traffic concerns, that a traffic study be performed by a licensed traffic study, independent traffic engineer. I've put a lot of words in that. To ensure that a roadway can handle the traffic for any major subdivision of fifteen lots or more. These are done in the city. These are done on most major subdivisions in the city. It's not done in the county. This is something that could resolve a lot of concerns about traffic. You have an independent traffic engineer come out, do his, do his measurements and can report that on whether or not that particular roadway, as it stands, can handle any additional traffic. And we go by that. He says not, then you have to think about widening the roads or maybe not doing the project at all. Um, I did put in here about setbacks. We're totally comfortable with setbacks as they stand and, uh, would wish that they don't be changed. Now, you're stating this isn't gonna be voted on today, correct?
This won't be voted on today. We, we have to have fourteen day, fifteen, fourteen days, what is it?
Fourteen days, alright. So, the resolution that, are, are y'all voting on your resolutions today too? Because you had fourteen days on those as well?
We're gonna, we will vote on, well, we just voted to put it off.
On all of them? Okay.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Question before you step away, uh, number two A. Uh, you say if you're fronting a road that does not have fifty-foot right-of-way, then the developer can be asked to dedicate, uh, basically twenty-five foot from the center line on the developer's side of the road, correct?
I believe that's-
That would not address property on the opposite side of the road.
Tell you what, I'll get back with you on that.
Okay. Just for clarification.
You are correct, Dennis, apparently.
Another question.
Yes.
He's talking about the fire hydrants a mile away. Are we talking about the way the crow flies or are we talking about road?
What is the current, um, status in the, in the zoning right now? What's it say?
It's along the road.
So it's along the road.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah.
So it's along the road, okay.
Yeah.
Has anybody asked Benton Bartlett about the roads? I did. He said all you needed was a twenty-foot paved road. Maybe we should ask him to be at the next meeting.
Any other question? No, thanks, thank you.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're already there.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Any discussion on what Mr. Seagrove put in front of us?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Please step to the microphone. I've, I've got text after text.
Alright, Aaron Brown. Um, if, if they do get that revised and resubmitted in time to be voted on at the next meeting, is that something that will be included in the agenda?
Are you talking about what Garth just did?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because I mean, it sounds like there's some middle ground, you know, like Ms. Bradley was, was saying. Um, it sounds like there's some middle ground that, I'm not gonna speak for anybody, but might be considered. Um, so I think it would be beneficial to not only the board, but the general public to have a copy of that to review beforehand, to come into this meeting prepared. Yes, yeah, I, I, I get the agenda. I just wanted to make sure that that would be included as, as an attachment to that agenda. Oh, it's, this one's already in there? Okay.
It's not, no. Okay, no, you know.
I didn't see it. I just downloaded the agenda and I didn't see it, so I just, I just wanted to double check that.
We didn't get it in time.
I understand, yeah.
But, but it, it will be.
Yeah, I think it would be very beneficial next time to have that as an attachment to that agenda that gets posted. So, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on what Mr. Seagroves put forward? I think it's pretty plain, pretty evident. Actually, I think the first part of it is already in our zoning resolution, you know? So, uh, did you hear that? I think the first part of that is already in the zoning resolution.
I think it works fine.
Hey, you did good. Uh, other, anything that anybody would like to discuss other? Why nobody wants to?
There's, uh, there's been people in the crowd that brought up underground utilities.
That's true. Uh, yes, uh, we have had that mentioned to us. We talked about it a little bit last time about requiring the new subdivisions to put the utilities underground. Uh, which makes a lot of sense to me. I don't know why they all aren't underground much. It'd keep people from losing electricity when a tree fell on it. Uh, uh, is anybody out there in the development crowd would like to speak to underground utilities?
Charles, we got three.
I thought, I thought I had you out of my sight, so I couldn't find you.
Charles, you're on three minutes.
Yeah. Years ago, I tried to put fire lake underground, electrical. Duck River would not let me. Now, over in Franklin County, they were letting them do it on the developments around the lake. But until Duck River changes their heart, they said, oh-
Who'd you make mad?
A bunch of people. But, I mean, that, seriously, they would not. And, and they said the reason is, well, if something happened to it, then we better dig in the ground. And I said, well, you know, if you have to dig in the ground, you have to dig in the ground. But they would not let me and-
And, and I understand a new development that just went in, uh, forty-one highway. They would not let those people, and that's why you got telephone.
That's good, good information. Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, I wish they would.
Yeah, wait, is there any way, maybe we could ask representatives from Duck River to be here next time?
We could, I, I, you know, you, you don't, you don't push the volunteer fire departments, you don't push the water utilities, and you don't push Duck River around, I don't see that.
One more, one other aspect?
Yes, sir.
If, if at all possible, we, in these meetings, we have a lot of people here. There's a lot of people standing, and it gets hot. Is there any possible way in the future that we could do these in the other room? Um, I don't know what, what that entails, but we've had some people leave. There's six, ten people lean on the wall, and I notice it's hot.
I can speak to that. The streaming video master control center has to be manned by a paid employee earning overtime wages. This is sort of real do-it-yourself thing. We can push this button and go with it, but the big room does require an employee in the back, so.
I'll chip in on it.
Yes. Yes, sir.
I'm kinda like Mr. Northcutt, I'm getting kinda wore out coming up here. Uh, speaking, I've spoke to real estate agents, I've spoke to Mr. Graham, I've, I've spoke to other farmers, trying to figure out where the middle ground is, and these zoning rules are a living document. And, uh, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you agreed with me when we talked about the UGBs possibly being expanded. That wouldn't be a terrible idea. And I know y'all said last meeting, it takes Manchester and Telahoma and Coffee County, it's a big ordeal, but I think if we can give some more ground for growth and, and protect a little bit out in the country, we can do a whole lot more with this than what we're doing right now, fighting over setbacks and whatnot. Is that something that could be considered, looking at the UGBs and updating those in the high-growth corridors? I mean, I, I, I don't think Old Airport Road or, or one twenty-seven is necessarily the high-growth corridor, but I do believe there's others in the county that is experiencing fast growth.
When you move the urban growth boundary.
Yes, sir.
Of course, I told you, it takes all three mayors.
Yes.
Telahoma's out to about as far as they can go.
It sounds like a Telahoma problem, but we got a Coffee County problem.
Manchester goes almost to one oh five. Uh, there's quite a lot of area inside the urban growth boundary for Manchester.
Okay.
What I don't like is the fact that Mr. Graham there has land that's contiguous to the city limits and can't be annexed because he's not an urban growth boundary. I think that's wrong.
I do too.
I think that's wrong.
I think the one on Rags Road is wrong, and I think the Buffalo's getting it.
I've also got a piece that's got a big arc going through it with forty, it's two hundred and forty acre farm. That somebody drew an imaginary line to the middle of it, and they've got that to be the urban growth boundary. And then all my neighbors is like in their property line.
Yeah, but, and I don't, I don't know.
And, and, and coming from the guy that's really outspoken on urban growth, I'm on his side on that. I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm trying, I think we're trying to be reasonable here, but we're, we're just wanting to find.
Mr. Brown, I mentioned in the last one, in the urban growth boundary, let's let the city, let the urban growth boundaries restrictions and zoning and planning be just like the cities, cause that's where the city's supposed to grow, and dangle a lure to the builders to move into the urban growth boundary and build. And I was told, why would we want to do that? Because I, I called the city afterwards, cause I was told, well, they can ask to be annexed. You cannot ask to be annexed into the city unless your property touches the city limits.
With all due respect, Rodney, you also, after the last commissioners' meeting, suggested that every developer in the county take a red crayon and sue the county.
I did that on Facebook.
I know, and that is.
I said, that's all it takes.
That is, that is inappropriate comments from a planning committee member to the county's.
I didn't tell them to sue. I said, all it does to take a lawsuit is takes a crayon and five hundred dollars.
I, I, I'm just.
My point being, we can set ourselves up for a ton of lawsuits with all this stuff.
I believe you are, but, but I think it's inappropriate for you to suggest that. I don't want to see anybody get sued, but what I do.
That's kind of the point.
What I do want to see is us find some common ground where we can keep our rural areas safe. The roads, you said twenty foot, Old Airport's eighteen. That's the one I'm most familiar with, that's why I keep going back. It's eighteen, eighteen, I drove down it today. I met a car.
That's why I said.
Met a truck with a goo, I met a truck with a gooseneck yesterday. He had run off the road. So let's throw eighty.
That's why I said, bring Benton Bartlett in and let him talk about roads. He should know more than any of us.
Also sold, also sold electrical supplies for fifteen years on the underground utilities. Duck River is compared to Middle Tennessee Electric, and yes, I've got their quirks, but it is, they do have some requirements on primary service lines going underground, forty-eight inches. A lot of them have to be encased in concrete, this, that, and the other. I also would like to propose, and this is gonna step on some toes, but is there any way that we can put some civil engineers in charge of A-one rural area due to the storm runoff, runoff, and quit letting surveyors design subdivisions that have packed their neighbors with storm runoff? There should be a civil engineer that has a license and the degree to do so. Thank you.
We already do that.
Northcutt a civil engineer at survey?
No, no, he's a surveyor, but he'll have to have a civil, there'll be an engineer to look at that mark.
Me again. I agree. I, I agree with this gentleman that came up here. I have a solution to that. Why don't we metro the entire county, include Telahoma, Manchester, and the county? That solves that problem.
It's been proposed for a long time, hasn't it? Do you wanna respond to the urban growth boundary, or not?
I wanna respond to Duck River Electric.
Okay. I recognize Mayor Hunt.
I just text the engineer with Duck River Electric in our low school office. I said, does Duck, does DRMC frown upon major subdivision having underground power? Answer, no, not at all. It's just much more expensive for the developer. We sometimes have issues finding a place for us to get in with such small setbacks with, uh, all the other underground utilities that beat us in there. So there's your answer from Duck River Electric. Uh, regarding lawsuits, I'm just gonna tell you, we hired, uh, George Dean, who's regarded as the, one of the masterminds, uh, in the legal profession with issues regarding land use and zoning. This is our county. Whatever we do, whatever we decide, may be one in one hundred cases, was his, uh, words, were ever reversed by any court of law. No court of proper jurisdiction would ever look at anything we did and think, they know better than the people that live here. So this throwing out these threats of lawsuits are totally inappropriate and would never, ever be lost by the county. So I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. And our training, uh, our training attorney has always said, he holds this book up. He said, this is yours. Change it, whatever you want, it belongs to you. It belongs to the citizens of Coffee County. And I swear, there's a lot in it. I hope everybody has a chance to look through it. It took me several years to really grasp all the concepts regarding in land use. People, all these land, uh, property rights arguments. Like I said, this book, from front to back, is telling you what you can or cannot do with your property. And that is a fact, it happens a lot. So, that's all I had to say.
Concerning the urban growth boundaries, uh, that was set when the, when the countywide growth plan was done. And Telahoma basically, and Manchester, and it plainly states, were given abnormally large urban growth boundaries. Of course, we've grown in those time periods. Telahoma unfortunately has a problem in that they're kinda landlocked in now. They got Manchester to the north, they got A-road to the, uh, northeast. They've got Franklin County to the east, they've got Moore County to the south, they got Bedford County. And their urban growth boundary extends to all those places. And it meets Manchester, Manchester's urban growth boundary down here at Crumpton Creek. So, uh, Manchester's is, is still large. There's still, you drive around Manchester, and there's a lot of land in the urban growth boundary. I do hate for Mr. Graham back there. He's got a piece of property, and I think Randy brought it up, and Nick did too, that the urban growth boundary splits it in two. That should never have happened. Should never have happened. Now, I'm not in favor of expanding the urban growth boundaries, but in a cir- circumstance like that, to get him, get that piece of property in the urban growth boundaries, and the piece of property that he's got that we've looked at on Ragsdale, on Ragsdale Road, that is contiguous to the city limits. But he can't ask to be annexed because he's not in the urban growth boundary. That's wrong. I don't care what anybody says, that's wrong. Uh, uh, that's all I have to say about that, but, uh, go ahead.
I, I got a question. I think it was last meeting or the meeting before, um, well, it was a commissioners' meeting, actually, that Mayor Dennis Hunt, uh, brought up about the, uh, zoning split in a property.
A parcel.
A parcel, okay. And we could go, you could go five hundred feet either way, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there not, I don't know of anything, I'm just asking, is there not anything that can be done like that for him?
My research, I couldn't find anything regarding the urban growth boundary line bisecting a parcel. Uh, did you ever find out, is your parcel always been one parcel or was it two?
As far as I know, it has, um, some guys owned it before me, and they cut off like some lots around the road. But, but as far as I know, as far as I can look back like on the property data, I cannot find anybody else.
Yeah. Anything but one parcel.
It was all one parcel for a long, long time.
If I were, if I may, the, the urban growth boundary, you know, I know one developer that owns nineteen hundred acres in the UGB right now. Think how many homes can go on that properties. Uh, also, I don't know why you couldn't develop what's in the UGB and develop the rest of it using our county, uh, standards. I don't know why you couldn't do that. So, that, that is a possibility. Also, Telahoma, they're, they, they're not, they're not without property that can be, uh, we're working with our Joint Economic Development Board, trying to get a developer, he's from out of town, but he's wanting to develop the, uh, I call it the Stone Farm. It's out there on Highway forty-one A. He's going, he's proposing a TIF arrangement. That's a tax in lieu of ta- of financing, tax incentivized finance. Anyway, regarding that, he's, he's got, uh, the property out there is going to add, uh, I believe it's nine hundred and twenty-two units will be on that one property alone. So, it's, it's not like that people, that you have to go out here in the A-one districts and start doing your major subdivisions when there is so much property that's in the urban growth boundaries. Already Zone C-one, right outside the urban growth ga- boundaries. Already, we have our planned growth area that goes all the way up to Hillsborough, along your major corridors. There's plenty, plenty of areas for major subdivision residential development without going and picking on our A-one district.
What if that's not where your land is, though? What if you, the land that you own is in the county, in A-one?
You're just unlucky.
Yeah, life, life's.
Sorry, guys.
Life's not bad, eh?
Countywide zoning resolution, and a map goes with you, and that was your chance to, uh, object to it. Has to be rezoned. That's always, we're doing it at practically every county commission meeting. We're doing it, uh, we did it the last meeting, we're gonna be doing it at the next meeting. Rezoning takes place regularly, and it's not a hard process.
Anybody have anything else? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sean Jones, I'm a farmer in the Asbury community. I'm gonna touch on several aspects that's been brought up tonight, if you won't mind. You know, some of them, y'all done tabled and everything like that. As far as underground utilities, I might be far-fetched here, but I'd say I speak for any farmer in this room. Go for it. I'm ready to take power poles out of my field any day. Equipment damage, it's, you know, it happens. Trust me, I hit a plant a little bit last time. Does anybody here know the definition of A-one?
I do.
I've got it right here.
I do, exactly.
The district intended to preserve space for agriculture and forestry use when together compromise an important segment of the economy of Coffee County. The primary intent of the A-one district is to minimize conflict between agriculture and forestry activities and various non-farm activities to permit lands best suited for intense agriculture uses to be preserved for these suited purposes, and to prevent lands unsuitable for development of an urban and non-rural nature due to topographic problems, location, and the inability to provide necessary urban services from being encroached upon by these incapable land uses. Areas assigned to the A-one district are primary areas where growth of urban and non-rural nature is deemed undesirable for one or more of the reasons outlined above. Although the A-one district is primarily a rural district, it also provides a low-density residential development. And there's more. I can keep going if you want me to, Rod.
I want you to read the paragraph below that that starts with agricultural activities.
Agriculture activities within this district may involve noise, odors, dust, and night operation of equipment, all associated with normal crop and livestock production activities. All residential users and developers of residential property shall be charged with the knowledge that they assume the risk of any discomfort associated with deciding to reside in this district arising out of said agriculture activities. That's a very good point. We run at night a lot. Michael, I'm sure you run at night. It's, it's inevitable. When the time is right, you gotta go. That's just how it is approached.
Basically, what that says is, somebody in a subdivision can't file a nuisance suit against you if the dust from your combine operation is blowing through their house. Uh, nor chicken manure spreading or anything like that. I mean, that's, that's normal agriculture.
That, that's a common issue in, on a farm. I mean, you can come to my farm right now, and I guarantee you, you will not like the way it smells. It's just, it's the nature of it. Back to the, the fire issue, the setbacks you were talking about. Dennis, as you know, I'm no stranger to fire within the last. If a house catches on fire, Aaron, how long would it take y'all to get here, to my house? Okay, actually, do you know?
Um, to get from.
Well. To get, if you, if I call in my house on fire, how long does it take to get to the station in turnout, back to my house? And I'm not far. I'm, I'm not far at all.
I mean, it depends on, um, you know, what time of day, what time of night it is. Are people at work, are they at home? Um, how quick can they, how far out from the fire station that they live? How quick can they get there?
There's a lot of variables, is what you're saying. Okay?
I think he's just asking for an average, what you're doing. Cause I do know that average.
I, I was told by a former fire chief of Hillsborough that it would take, if they come to my house, and it's on fire, and they run out of water, the closest hydrant is Hillsborough School. I don't know the exact distance. I know when I take my daughter to school, it takes me ten minutes to get there. He said they could be to Hillsborough, fill a pumper, back, twenty minutes. Which I would say is pretty good. I mean, I'm not a volunteer fireman, I, I applaud them every day. You know, I donate to them every year. My question is, if they come to my house and they get it somewhat under control, they're out of water. Take a day like they're saying tomorrow's gonna be, thirty, forty mile an hour winds. The wind's blowing, it chucks back up, just like a brush pile, anything like that, it's gonna get hot again. Take it's a dry year. One ember goes into my neighbor's yard, twenty-five foot across the line. His yard's on fire, then his house is on fire, and it just keeps spreading. I'm all for raising the setbacks, absolutely. I mean, they, they're saying a hundred foot's drastic, I don't care if you go a hundred yards. I don't care if you go two miles, it don't bother me either way. don't care if you go two miles, it don't bother me either way, but, you know, that's up to y'all completely. Another thing, I have an article here that was in the Tennessee, or in the Tennessean. Dennis, I don't know if you were at this or not. Says, "Middle Tennessee mayors tackle traffic congestion, livability, and anti-growth segment." Scrolling through it here, a skipper. Do you know who Mr. Skipper is by chance?
That doesn't ring a bell to me.
He said, it says, "Skipper convened with local government leaders last week at Middle Tennessee State University's annual forum on growth and regional challenges. Mayors from across the region discussed how their respective cities and counties are responding to the area's explosive growth while maintaining livability for longtime residents." You skip through here a little bit, and I'll leave this, if anybody wants to read it, I just printed it offline. There is a segment here. "Concentrating development along existing high-use roads is one way to add housing while intentionally conserving open space, natural areas, and farmland," panelists said. "It's also a more sustainable approach and saves resources that would otherwise be spent adding infrastructure to support houses in previous undeveloped areas." The way I understand that, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong, concentrate the development on major roads. You know, that's the way I understand it, and I might be a hundred percent wrong, but...
Most of your major roads already has...
The infrastructure there.
...the infrastructure there.
Yes.
Your major roads.
And what you were saying earlier, and I think it was kind of misunderstood by some people, if you run an eight-inch water line, it don't need to be fed by a two-inch and then necked back down to a two-inch, you're not accomplishing nothing.
No.
So, I mean, it's, there's a lot that needs to go through, it's like anything, and I'm, like Michael said, I'm with anybody for common ground, you know? If it was up to me, I'd stop all development, and if I were on the lottery, you'd see I-24 in a cornfield, is what I can tell you, but that's personally me, you know? But ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time, and that's all I got for right now. Thank you all.
Okay.
Like Columbo, just one more thing.
Okay.
The original draft documents for our zoning resolution that was given to me by a former county commissioner, the book requirements, I think it's what, Appendix Four, is that where all their lots are? Actually, the A-one district originally was to be fifteen-acre minimum lot size in the A-one district. How it got whittled down to where it's the same on all districts, I'll never know, but I think it was a great disservice to our A-one district that it happened, and I don't know how it happened.
I think somebody else wanted to speak.
I was just going to answer your question. Um, I actually live on the Bedford Coffee line, and I performed CPR on my neighbor for forty-five minutes because Coffee County and Bedford County were fighting who would take the call, and it was Bedford that showed up, so you want a timestamp, forty-five minutes?
Well, folks, I think that we have had some good points made on both sides. Uh, hope you listened to them all, I'm sure you can remember everything that was said. But as someone in the last county commission said, to try to keep me from speaking, we've been here long enough. Does anybody have any more comments? Anybody from the crowd have any more comments?
When's the next meeting?
The next meeting will be, have you got a date on that? Twenty-second. Twenty-second.
At four?
At four. Anybody got anything else?
So is there no vote that's going before the full commission as a result of tonight's meeting?
Nothing as of tonight's meeting. Am I correct, Mayor?
Correct.
The...
For the county, that's possible.
April twenty-second, our April twenty-second meeting will be our regular scheduled meeting, whatever that Tuesday is. Cindy, you better tell me right. I know that y'all would like to stay here longer, but I would listen to a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second. Anybody, uh, have any objection? All in favor, say aye. Aye.